Good evening. I call to order this regular meeting of the Minnehaha County Planning Commission, and I will begin with a few introductory comments. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, please make sure that all cellphones are turned off. Please note that tonight's Planning Commission meeting will be rebroadcast via CityLink and posted on the www minnehaha county.org site for viewing by the general public. Any final action taken on the conditional use permit applications tonight will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of the Planning Commission's decision is filed in the planning office by Wednesday, December 1st at 5:00 PM. In the event of an appeal, the decision will be referred to the County Commission for a hearing on Tuesday, December 21st, 2021, at or after 9:00 AM. The affected parties will be notified of the meeting date, and meetings of the County Commission are held in this same room. First on the agenda is public input. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? At this time, the Planning Commission will consider the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are perceived to be non-controversial and meet all of the requirements of the codes and regulations. The consent agenda will be acted on in one motion with no public hearing on the items unless a member of the public, the commission, or staff requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. The minutes from the October 25th meeting are included in the consent agenda. Does any Planning Commission member wish to have an item removed for discussion?
Madam Chair, I'll need to recuse myself from the consent agenda tonight.
Thank you, Mike. Next, I will read each item on the consent agenda and ask if there are any issues or comments from the staff or the audience. If any member of the staff or the audience would like to be heard on the item, please raise your hand, and the item will be moved to the regular agenda to allow you to address the commission later in the meeting. Any items remaining on the consent agenda will be approved by the Planning Commission with the conditions recommended by staff. Item number one is the approval of the minutes of the October 25th, 2021 meeting. Item number two is conditional use permit 21-72 to transfer one building eligibility from the northwest quarter, the southeast quarter, to the northeast quarter, the southeast quarter, all in Section 4 Township 102 North, Range 50 West. That is Benton Township. The petitioner is Mike and Holly Ralston. They're also the property owner. That's approximately a half a mile north of 257th Street. Item number three is conditional use permit 21-73 to exceed 3,600 square feet of accessory building space requesting 5,900 square feet on the property legally described as Track 2. There is an exception of Track 3 Jacob's 2nd Edition. That is the northeast quarter, Section 25 Township 101 North, Range 51 West. That is Wall Lake Township. Petitioner is Tim McLeish. He is also the property owner. That is approximately three miles west of Sioux Falls. Item number four, conditional use permit 21-74 to transfer one building eligibility from Track 2 New Hearts Edition to Track 1 New Hearts Edition. There is an exception of Lot A, all in the southeast quarter, Section 2 Township 104 North, Range 52 West. That is Buffalo Township. Petitioners Terry and Barbara Newhart. They're also the property owners. North side of 245th Street, directly east of Buffalo Lake. Item number five is conditional use permit 21-75 to transfer two building eligibilities from Track 2 Canacamas Edition, southwest quarter, Section 5 Township 101 North, Range 48 West. That is Split Rock Township. To the west half, the northwest quarter, there is an exception of the Baker's Edition and except H-1. Section 8 Township 101 North, Range 48 West. That is in Split Rock Township. Petitioner is Rock Mills Incorporated. That's also the property owner. It's a fourth mile east of the intersection of East Maple Street and North Sixth Mile Item number six is conditional use permit 21-76 to allow a public utility facility on the property legally described as Dive Ex Tract 1, the east half, the northeast quarter, Section 31 Township 104 North, Range 49 West. That is in Del Rapids Township. Petitioner is Kelly Hannigan. Property owner is L. Bruce Nelson. That is approximately three-fourths mile northwest of Baltic.
You want that item pulled to discuss? Anyone? All right.
I would.
Okay, well, you need to speak up. If you want it, pull.
So, and item number six will be removed to the regular agenda. So we have items number one through five.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agendas, items one through five.
Second, I have any further discussion? I have a motion as second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. If any of those items have been approved, you are free to go.
It's on the regular agenda, so we're going to discuss that. All right. Okay. So, I'll be filling in for Kevin tonight. I'm Scott Anderson, the Planning Director, and this is a hearing on conditional use permit 21-76 to allow public facility structure on the area that the chairperson read aloud. It is a request. The petitioner has been working with multiple companies on a gas line project connecting several dairies, dairy farms in the area to the natural gas pipeline. There is an existing natural gas pipeline, and the location at this site allows for connection into that existing pipeline underground. The facility will require several or a couple of above-ground structures, and these buildings will be larger than 120 square feet, and they will be required to obtain a building permit for each structure, and a conditional use permit is going to be required before the construction of these buildings and the connection can begin. The petitioner has provided information, which is included in your packet for review, of the buildings and the plans for the connection. The site plan shows that the property will be fenced, and there'll be landscaping around it. The, and the property will be graded to allow for runoff to occur to, I think he said, the southeast where it naturally occurs. Kevin did note that, right now, this property is located outside of FEMA's floodway or flood boundaries, but with the adoption that is going to occur of new maps, it is likely that this is going to be in, and we've alerted the petitioner, and they have indicated that they would be doing some elevation, so they would, they know what the data is from FEMA, and they will be elevating the buildings up out of the floodplain. So, they've already started to address that. As you're aware, we look at several criteria when evaluating conditional use permits to determine what the appropriateness of the proposed use, and we look at the effect that this could have on the property values and the uses already in the vicinity. The property is located in a primarily agricultural productive, production area. There are two farmsteads that are located nearby. One of the farmsteads is owned by the current property owner, and the application for the public utility facility includes a landscape plan to surround the facility with a fence and two rows of trees for screening. Traffic to the site will be minimal once the construction is completed. Secondly, we look at what impact this or effect it might have on normal and orderly development and improvements of the surrounding vacant properties for the land uses that are predominant in that area. The area, as I indicated, is primarily agricultural land, and much of the land to the east you can see is part of the creek and is, there's, part of that is floodplain. It's unlikely that this area would be developed residentially because of the floodplain, and the proposed use would not stop any kind of agricultural use of the surrounding areas. People could still farm. Thirdly, we look at the utilities for like roads and water and electricity. The property will be accessed from the township road. There's going to be some site grading that'll be done to put some dirt on the east side of the property, which will elevate it slightly. This will prevent flooding on the site, and water will be directed to that southeast area. We look, the fourth, we look at off-street parking requirements. The site is, will only need limited parking, and there will be enough space on the lot to accommodate street parking, and I believe that as part of the conditions of, recommended conditions of approval, we are indicating that the applicant keep and maintain two parking, off-street parking spaces. We look at, fifth, we look at what control or what measures would be taken to control dust, noise, vibrations, and lighting. There is a condition that is, requires all lighting to be downward, and the use should not create any nuisance for odors, fumes, dust, vibration, or lighting. Lastly, we look at the health, safety, general welfare of the public and the comprehensive plan. The proposed use is infrastructure that will connect an existing natural gas pipeline to the local dairies into this pipeline, and will deliver gas for homes and businesses in the area. The area is sparsely populated with the closest residents being approximately 500 feet away. Staff feels that this is a benefit to the community because it's capturing methane from dairies that would otherwise be lost into the atmosphere, and so staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit with nine conditions. Madam Chairman, would you like me to read the conditions?
Why don't you go ahead, Scott?
Sure. We're recommending approval with nine conditions, and those nine conditions are: number one, that the substation be entirely enclosed with a minimum of a six-foot-high fence gated and locked; number two, all lighting must be fully cut off and directed downward to prevent glare from spreading off of the property; number three, that a minimum of two off-street parking spaces, which are a minimum of nine feet by 18 feet in size, shall be provided, surfaced with gravel, concrete, or asphalt, and maintained in such a manner that no dust will result from continuous use; number four, that erosion control measures are implemented on all disturbed areas so as not to allow any sedimentation of the existing drainage ways or bodies of water; number five, that the applicant adhere to the landscape plans submitted with the application; all landscaping shall be maintained in a live state, and all noxious weeds shall be controlled by the operator; number six, that the applicant obtain a building permit prior to the construction commencing on the site; number seven, that a signed permit shall be obtained prior to the installation of any signage. Number, that was number seven. Number eight, all structures and equipments must be elevated above the current and projected base flood elevation; and number nine, that the applicant obtains and keeps current, any required South Dakota public utility permits. So, I will take some, I wasn't, to be, I'll let you know, I wasn't out to the site. Kevin was out there. So, but there's the air photo, and we'll, I'll just go through the slides that he, the pictures he took, and I'm hoping they're going to be self-explanatory. So, looks like this is sort of looking, it's down at, looking towards the west, southwest, maybe? This is looking back towards the creek, it looks like, from that corner. This is looking down the township road to the west. This is looking south at the pasture. I guess you can see the trees along the south border there. This must be the closest residence to the north. And that's it. Thought you had pretty good on those. So I'll be glad to answer any questions you have, and go from there.
Any questions for Scott?
Scott, for Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Scott, that first paragraph, several buildings, what, what might be the magic number of several buildings? Do you have any idea?
Looks like there is, on the site plan, it looks like there's two little buildings with some kind of like little breezeway, and then there may be some kind of like, looks like there's some kind of like little skid thing there. I'm not sure if that's a cement pad. That, that might be, and the applicant's here, so that might be a good question for the applicant to answer.
Okay.
Further questions for you right now?
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Is the petitioner here?
Yeah.
Will you, please come forward and state your address, please, your name and address.
Kaylee Hannigan, Representative of Northern Natural Gas.
Go ahead, Doug.
Yeah, could you be more specific on when that says several buildings, or maybe the initial might be a couple buildings, but if this thing grows, could more buildings be added?
Is it five, Joel? I've got my project manager here with me.
Sir, why don't you go forward, please? State your name, too, please.
Joel Glance, Omaha, Nebraska, project manager for the Brightmark Athena Site. Northern will have three buildings on there, one for, two of them for controls, one of them for measurement. The measurement is an eight-by-16. The controls building, one of them is a 12-by-20, the other is a 16-by-20.
Speak into the mic. He said you can't, he can't hear you back there.
Oh, sorry about that. Okay, there'll be three buildings. Northern will have three buildings on site. One of them for measurement, it's an eight-by-16 building. The other is, the two others are control buildings, one for measurement, one for power control or pressure controls. One of them is 12-by-20, the other is 16-by-20.
And then? We have a Brightmark representative with us, too. Dan, is there additional buildings on the west portion?
Hi, good evening. My name is Dan Kubatschek. I'm from Alameda, California. We do have buildings on the Brightmark portion of the Interconnect sites. I unfortunately don't have those details with me right now, but can provide them if needed.
Okay. And then I have one more question, and I don't know who that can speak to that. It's number eight. What might be the height of the projected for flood elevation? Any thought on that, or do you might have a good estimate?
Yep, three feet we'll be putting up. We took a look at the FEMA flood plans, and they stay below that elevation, so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So to the eastern half would be elevated three foot.
Okay.
The lot slopes down towards the Crickin River, three foot on the east, level out to ground surface on the west.
Okay, and that's, did they say like that's for a hundred-year flood, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Just want to be clear on that.
Yep, the brand-new FEMA floodplain maps that have come out.
And it'd be near up there. So when this is in operation, will there be any odor that might be concerning to the general public?
The pipeline is deodorized, so our pipeline has none. The Brightmark line conforms with all of the guidelines for biomethane gas. One of the guidelines is no detectable odor. We pressure test those. Our line is tested to 800 pounds plus, so there should be no leaks.
Okay, I figured there wasn't.
And we measure the chemical constituents going into the biogas facility and coming out of, so.
Perfect. I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that before we voted on this.
Yep, I understand. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for him? We may have you come back if we have any questions out there. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak to this item?
You have no comment?
Is that what you're saying? Okay. Anyone else care to speak to this item?
Madam Chair, if I may?
Go ahead, Mike.
It appears that there are some, staff has put together, you know, some nice recommendations or guidelines here, and you know, it seems that we, the petitioner has acknowledged the grading issue, and I do agree that it is a public service, so I guess with that I'd make a motion to approve.
And I'll second that, item number six, conditional use permit 21-76.
Okay, I have a motion as second to approve a conditional use permit 21-76. Any other further comment or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Item number six has been approved. Thank you. Move on to the regular agenda.
Item number seven on the agenda is an item that was continued from your last meeting, conditional use permit 21-71. This was to allow an outdoor commercial storage area on property located in generally Rowena. And you may recall, this is the slide that we talked about at great deal last, last time, and I did have a chance to talk to the, to give you an update. I'm not going to go over the whole request because we all know, I mean, I think it's fresh in our memory what it was for. Some outdoor storage, which is a conditional use permit, and you can see that in Rowena there are other areas where there is some storage and warehousing. At our last meeting, there was a lot of discussion about the road and the drainage, and you continued this for one month to allow the applicant time to work with the township, to maybe come up with a drainage plan and road maintenance, to address the road maintenance issues. I had a chance to talk to the applicant this morning, and they have not had a chance to get themselves on the Split Rock Township agenda for the road, to discuss the road. So, at this time, I don't think there's a lot to discuss other than, I think it's, my recommendation would be that we continue this until our January meeting, which is January 24th, the fourth Monday, in order for them to discuss this with their township, which they have indicated they are on the agenda for the second week in December. I think the applicant said they were going to be here tonight. They may wish to also address you, and I know there's people that are here for this item, but there has been not any progress or resolution on the drainage or the road.
Okay, is the applicant here? Please step forward, sir. State your name and address.
Brian Smith, 4900 South Kalen Place, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. I'm representing the applicant. Alex Halbeck is the applicant. Just to give you an update on where we're at at this point, I spoke with Marv Manifold, who is at least a member of the township board, if not the head of the township board, and discussed potential ways that we could handle it. Unfortunately, you know, during harvest, it's harder to get in touch with folks and coordinate this, and so we didn't get on the November docket, but we are on the December meeting to discuss options and try to come together with the township on a solution for how to handle the drainage issue or the current water issue. There's basically no ditch on the east side of the road right now. It's almost level with the road, if you want to call it a road. When I, when I spoke with Marv, he made it sound like the township had not accepted that even as a minimum maintenance road, which I think there's some confusion about, you know, whether the township has accepted that as a minimum maintenance road or not. He called it a city alley, so I'm not sure where things stand on that for sure, and I really don't want to get into that fight either, because that's, that's, you know, it doesn't have a lot to do with what Alex is trying to do with that land as far as whether that road is accepted by the township or not. Either way, the solution to the water going over the top of the road is to give the water a place to run on the east side of Split Rock Avenue there, and so we're in the process of finding out how much can be done from the standpoint of cleaning that ditch out and getting the township on the same page as far as allowing us to clean it out, however that road is classified. And then also, you know, while Marv and I were out there looking at it, we talked about the fact that there could be rock, you know, granite very close to the, to the surface, and the only way to deal with that, if we dig down and we can't create much of a ditch, is to build the road up. And so Marv gave me some information for a contact that he has, who is an engineer, and so I've reached out to the engineer and have not spoken with him yet about what it would take to bring the road up to the township specs, because Marv did say that the township would accept that as a road if it was built up to normal specifications that all township roads are held to. Now, I don't know those specifications, and haven't had an opportunity to talk with the engineer about what those specifications are exactly, but we're in the process of trying to gather that information and maybe even get a bit on what it would cost to try to bring the road up to specs, because it seems like the, that would potentially solve the issues if the landowners would get together and bring the road up to specs, and then the township takes it over moving forward. Now that's, I haven't had a chance to speak with any of the other landowners in the area on what their feelings would be about partnering on that kind of a project, so I have no idea what anyone's thoughts would be on that. As far as one of the other issues that we talked about last time, the residential property to the east and the 33 feet of right-of-way of an abandoned street in Rowena, I have had a chance to discuss that with Bill and Rhonda, the property owners to the east, and I believe we've come to an agreement that if Alex moves forward with purchasing this land, Bill and Rhonda would be willing to deed that 33 feet to Alex. Rhonda would be willing to deed that 33 feet to Alex as long as the existing trees that are standing on the property are removed, and the screening requirements for additional evergreen trees are added, and all of those types of things are done. So, I, we have a kind of a verbal understanding of what it would take to at least get over that hurdle. So, and I'll be happy to answer any other questions after other people have an opportunity to speak.
Scott, should I go ahead with who's out there? Is there any one else that like, care to address this item? In the audience? Please step forward, state your name and address, sir.
Dick Funky, I'm the adjacent, Brandon, South Dakota, I'm the adjacent landowner to the south of that property there, and I think I can speak for some of the others. We're okay with what's going on with that property as long as the drainage address is addressed. And that ditch is, there is enough room for a ditch to be cleaned there, and that one time, I've been here for 70 years living on that same place, and there used to be a ditch, it silted in, so I think with some minor work on the ditch, allow the drainage to go down to the culvert that drains into, I believe it's Everest Land, we'd be fine. So, I think this could be solved very simply if we just approach it correctly. The Lead Rock Avenue has been a point of contention forever. It is a minimum maintenance road. The attorney for Split Rock Township told me once that they had accepted it. It is a township road. It's grandfathered in, whether it's been platted or not, that's a different point, but, so, I think that's where I'm at with this project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else care to address this item? Please state your name and address, sir.
Sure. Rick Everest, 350 South Main Avenue, and we're right to the, to the west, and I just want to second everything that he said. I think it's a fairly simple matter of getting in the water to that culvert. I don't think that should be a huge issue, but as long as that happens, I think it'll be okay. So, thank you.
Okay, I guess I'll close the floor. Scott, what, do you want us to defer it again, or?
Yeah, I think, I think the prudent thing to do is to continue it to our next meeting. There is no meeting in December, so our next meeting would be January 24th. That should give them ample time to go to the township, work it out, and, and maybe even go to the township a second time in January if they needed to, so, but that, that would be the date of our next meeting.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I entertain a motion to defer till January 24th, item number seven, conditional use, 21-71.
I'll second that.
I have a motion as second to defer conditional use permit 21-71 to the January 24th meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Scott, any old business?
Just a couple items. At nine o'clock is the public hearing on the rezoning for that property in Corson. I don't see it as being very controversial, but just, just letting you know. And then, secondly, there are two planning commissioners that, whose terms expire at the end of next month, end of Jan, of December, Becky Randall and Adam Morehouser, and I sent out an email to all of you earlier. We have, we have published a, like a public service announcement, soliciting interest from the community. I did provide Becky and Adam the application form if they choose to reapply. The deadline would be December 10th to return that to us at the county here, and then I will submit to the county commission all those that apply sometime probably in December or early January, and we'll get our two people appointed or reappointed, whatever the case is, at, before the meeting on the 24th.
Okay.
That's all.
No new business then either? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you, everyone.